See what you're going.
Here, you ready? You want to keep going. Okay, today is Monday, July, on June the 24th, 2019. Uh, the work session will now come to order. It's now five.
June 24th.
June, June 24th.
Not the 19th.
You're right, June the 24th. Time is now 5:13. We have three items, uh, for the work session. One is Trinhead Housing Authority, request to waive the pilot, pay the lieu taxes. Item two is AMI hotel ordinance, and three is utility shut-off ordinance. We're going to take the housing authority ordinance or item first. So, um, who has information, is that Mike? Does Mike have that one? On housing authority?
Yeah, I didn't.
You want to comment on that?
Um, you can probably come in and just do, I think, both of you in those negotiations last summer.
Right.
That, what this is tied to is when we asked the housing authority to form a partnership with ArtSpace for the space to create projects, so that it could be taxed as in. Um, at the time, they asked that the city waived the payment of taxes at the end, which is, I think it was like seventy some thousand dollars a year.
Yes, sir.
No? That's correct, yeah.
And that was agreed to among that group that was meaning to, to negotiate that last summer.
And I think part of the conversation was either reducing it or all, but I think that was part of the conversation. And, uh, that was my understanding. Rosemary, you want to comment, Rosemary?
Well, sure, I, I just think it's important that, you know, we're not talking about seventy thousand dollars a year. Okay, we're talking about a much less, a lesser amount. Uh, last year in 2018, the city was paid twenty-one thousand, five hundred, thirty-nine dollars. Um, I have, I have not calculated 2019, where our revenues were up a little bit, so it'll be slightly higher than that for 2019. Um, Corazon is very consistent, it pays you about, I don't, and I don't have those figures with me, about seventy-five hundred a month. And I'm asking that, uh, the pilot be waived for both, both programs.
Did you say seventy-five hundred a month?
No, I'm sorry, you did say a month, but I meant a year. So, so we're, we're talking about half, half that amount, a little less than half that amount that was mentioned to them previously.
Okay, so. Greg, do you agree?
With doing this?
No, no.
The amount? I, I don't know what the, uh, the dollar amount is.
Have they, he made a write-down vote to figure out that?
I think that the number I mentioned just came up in discussion last summer, according to the work.
Probably not, because pilot is, uh, I mean, it's fairly consistent. You can, you can, you know, go back ten, twelve years, and it's, it's going to be around, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
So between both programs, what is that dollar amount?
We'll say twenty-nine thousand.
And is the proposal for a one-time waiver?
Or a henceforth waiver.
A henceforth waiver.
What?
What? No, um, actually, it, it goes back to a conversation I had with Andrew Meiselson. And my question to him was, if the housing authority does not become your partner, will ArtSpace fly? He said, no. He says, what you are saving us is forty thousand a year for the next fifteen years. It's my understanding that, uh, before ArtSpace changes hands in the city. So I'm asking for fifteen years. I didn't specify that in the letter, but, uh, we'd be very happy with fifteen years.
Would you, I mean, I'm not sure if you remember that part of the discussion where we talked either all or part. I'm not sure if that would be, uh, just, I'm not sure.
I mean, certainly we'll take what we can get, but I'm kind of, I'm an all-or-nothing type of person.
And, and your position, as I understand, quit, pro quo, right?
No, I, I think that's.
If we, if your involvement saves and motivates the ArtSpace program for fifteen years, then I'm understanding that it would be your position that for fifteen years, it makes things equal.
Okay, and send this one over to Mr. Downs. Was my understanding that quit, pro, quit, quid pro quo, I put difficult time saying that, is something that we shouldn't be talking about.
Spiritually speaking, it, it sounds, but it doesn't have to be that.
Let's call it whatever you want to define it as.
Well, I call it an agreement.
Okay. Your agreement is that because of your involvement, ArtSpace flies. And without that, you were told it probably wouldn't work.
Oh, the cost of forty thousand.
And your position is that for the, the duration of the, 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 uh, fifteen years, we should agree to waive the total payment.
I would hope so.
You know, a lot of times the formulation is, you've got, you're creating a good and you split it down the middle. It seems like you're asking for it all.
Couple, couple things here. First of all, we didn't ask to be part of this, okay?
Understood.
We, we, matter of fact, we, it was an oversight that the housing authority was even approached one of. I mean, it was approached late in the game, okay? Didn't give us a lot of time to make up our minds. We have received no public recognition for our participation. Not one of the things we talked about in terms of, your word, um, has, has happened yet. And we're, we're sitting on five months into this project, which was, it was grueling to get from there to the board signing the partnership.
You're talking about the newspaper article?
Huh?
Your name was left out of the newspaper article.
About three or four or five times, yeah.
Uh, well, I don't know what to tell you. Um, you know, there are a lot of people that were left out of the newspaper article. I, I am often misquoted in the newspaper.
No, no, I understand that, and I, and I, I can deal with that to, to some degree. But you got to understand, the housing authority has never had a good rep because we house people that people don't want to serve. We deal with the police department very well, I might add. It, it's, it's, we're not always seen in a positive light. So a little recognition for our generous participation in ArtSpace would have been much appreciated. And it would have been very helpful.
I think you were mentioned in speeches, that's for certain.
Yeah, okay.
And I know the mayor specifically did that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And the fact that you were left out of a Chronicle news article, that's something we literally cannot control. We don't read it before it goes to press. You know, if we get in, it'd be tough.
And I was unaware of the speech piece, so I want to say I'm corrected.
Yeah. But going forward, we'll see, we can change that if it comes on in the state for a good measure. It's part of the recognition.
Okay.
We can do that. So now it's up to council as to what your thoughts are, and, uh.
At forty thousand over fifteen years, that's six hundred thousand.
There's twenty-nine thousand.
She saved thirty.
No, but she said it's really more like thirty, and it might be a little bit closer this year, because we're adding twenty-two plus seventy-five hundred. That's third. And then you said in 2019, it's probably going to be higher.
It will be slightly higher, we had, we had these around here.
Over fifteen years.
At thirty thousand a year for fifteen years, that's four hundred fifty thousand. That's not an opinion, that's just a thought.
That's fair.
Karen, what's your thought?
Well, Kate, explain this to me, because this is all brand new to me, and I've never had any, um, experience with either program. So you're asking for all the money from all public housing, or just for the ArtSpace?
No, no, no. Uh, the federal government has regulation, HUD has a regulation that, and this was entered, I don't remember, nineteen sixty-two or something like that, an agreement where you would provide, all the services you provide other citizens. And we in turn would not have to pay taxes, with the exception of a percentage of our rent, rent, uh, revenue. And it's about ten percent of our rent revenue that we pay in, in payments to you in lieu of those taxes. To cover such things as police protection, fire protection.
So you want us to waive that fee on all the properties, even though we're only contributing, you're only contributing to the space to create?
No, we, we serve as a, a, a very limited partner in space to create. So that space to create then does not have to pay taxes, property taxes, on their properties. We have no voting rights, we have, and we have absolutely no liability in the project.
Yeah, I think their percentage is like point zero zero one or something like that, is what it is.
I, I remember the conversations with the lawyers. They kept you a country mile away from even the remotest possibility of liability.
I, I felt pretty good with that second three.
And that was a big question amongst all of your, uh, board members, was the liability. So we had to reassure them of that because of that one zero zero one, that that liability was negative.
And, and most importantly, I was afraid of any fair housing suits, because you've, you've got a targeted audience, which I understand, all you can do is target, targeted marketing, you can actually rent to any person that meets the financial criteria.
I guess we, uh, obviously my opinion, but.
I'm, yeah, I'm done.
Um, I would be in favor of starting something with a, a formula, to see how this goes with the anticipation of giving you the full benefit that you're asking for after a set amount of time, if, we're, we've got a housing shortage, shortage in Trinidad.
We do.
And if we start to bring in developers that want to work with affordable housing, regardless of it's specifically towards like indigent people or people just like affordable housing that still works with the federal housing authority programs, is that something that you would be willing to entertain as well as part of this agreement? Because I feel that in order for us to bring in more people for economic growth, et cetera, we need a partner like the housing authority. And I feel that if we're willing to do this, and I am willing to do this, if we have an agreement that we can have a working relationship with our housing authority, if we bring in a developer of any sort that wants to put in more affordable housing for people in Trinidad, is that something that your board would be amenable to?
Well, probably, but I doubt that we would be part of it. Uh, right now, we're in what's called a RAD conversion, I mean, I've just barely opened the instruction booklet on it. But it will allow us to change our funding base, and that's what you're going to see, is a lot of RAD programs coming in, which is basically, well, my family housing, without all the constraints of public housing. It's still affordable housing, but we'll have a little bit more freedom in terms of how our, our reserves are spent. And that's probably a year down the road. So I doubt that we'll be doing any additional development right now, and I, I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
I'm not asking you to do the development, but if someone comes in and needs a partner like housing authority, like they have before with ArtSpace or Space to Create.
I see what you're saying.
Is that something that you and your board would be amenable to?
You know, I talked to them, it was about blue in the face to get this done, so I don't know, I can't speak for them. They were, they were very hesitant to jump into this partnership.
And, and I understand that, but if, if we are willing to concede some money for the fifteen-year plan, I mean, I would like to see that there is some, a, a good, healthy relationship.
Well, I, I'd like to see a good, healthy relationship too, because I do think we're in a high housing crisis. I had this epiphany the other day, like two days ago. And I'm getting ready to retire, by the way, so these are really nice, they're coming down, like we just passed the line, but, um, we're housing people in homes that were built for families of the nineteen sixties, when maybe they had one television. Now, their six-year-old has a device. Uh, we were, we were talking about, um, the various criteria when HUD comes to check our, the, the, the quality of our, our physical properties. We get dinged almost yearly, or every three years, whenever they do their assessment, on trip hazards, because people have fifty-seven extension cords leading through their entire house, cable cords, that type of stuff. It's probably time, and I use the words, that we've used the money to improve public housing stock, but I think it's time to replace public housing stock. Bring them into the twenty-first century, provide nice homes where kids aren't tripping over each other, uh, spread them out, so we're not creating, um, communities that, that have some issues. Um, so yeah, I'd like to see the whole thing revamped.
And that's what I'm trying to, I guess, get to, I mean, if we bring in a developer who's going to build new, uh, multifamily housing facilities, you know, complexes, is that something that your board would be willing to enter for?
I, I wish I could speak for the carlos board members.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're getting off the subject here to, to agree because.
But I think it's a good idea.
We need to, we need to stand to what this.
Very opinionated board, yeah.
I mean, I attended some of those meetings.
Yeah.
And there is a, there is a lot of, you know, in the beginning, a lot of it will well, and so I, I understand that you can't speak for your board. Uh, but there's a lot of mistrust, and, uh, I guess I understand a lot of that. Um, you know, where I come out is, I'm used to splitting, you know, splitting the bait. Uh, if it's forty thousand dollars, can't we reduce your payment in lieu of taxes by twenty thousand? In other words, whatever it would be, let's say, let's say five years from now, it goes up to sixty thousand. I don't want to waive that without knowing that it's going to be, knowing that it might be sixty thousand, and we save forty. What I would like to propose, and I don't know what others think, is that, um, we give you half of the benefit that you created, and it's still a substantial amount of money, that would be three hundred thousand dollars over fifteen years.
And it is, and I do feel that the city should contribute at least to some degree.
Yeah.
More so than just police protection, fire protection, into some development costs. It's, it's outrageously high. I was, I was told to plead a, a financial hardship case, but I can't. Um, we've got plenty of money, but we just need to lose some of the restrictions so we can spend it and start doing some more development.
I think that would be fair. I mean, that's my thought, is that you keep half, you keep half, and whatever the number is, you just reduce it by twenty thousand dollars. Does that seem fair?
You know, when we talked, it was, it was relieving this of our pilot responsibility, which to me means one hundred percent of what that calculated amount is.
Okay, I don't remember agreeing to that.
There was several meetings. Um, and, and I have to tell you, it was the.
I don't think so. But, I, because I would have known the number.
Yeah. Now, the, the HUD people, we had, we had two, uh, actually, our portfolio manager from HUD and her, um, Section Eight counterpart, were there for one meeting, and I believe you had an ArtSpace meeting going that night, you sent a, an intern to our meeting. And, and during that meeting is when she suggested, asked for pilot relief. It happens all over the country. And, and basically, it's so that that money gets reinvested into the housing program. So for whatever it's worth, that's, that's what I'm asking, and I'm sure.
The intern was from ArtSpace, or he was injured?
He was injured.
Wallace?
Oh, what? And, and he, he, well, he talked about it, but that was about it, there was no agreement made on it.
No, no, he. But that's, that's when it came up, and then I proposed it to you. So I, I can't say that I even came up with this idea, but I think it was broken.
Well, it's, it's kind of an open-ended amount, and it could end up being substantially higher than the money that we're supposed to.
It can, but it's relative, I mean, it's, you know, dollars twenty years from now, we're going to be spending like, you know, this amount of money right now, so I'm not sure we're looking at, at a huge difference. But, like I said, I came here, um, I thought we had a done deal, then I was asked to prepare a letter, prepare a letter, and then I was asked to come speak here, so, you know, I'm happy with whatever we did.
He was a Vista volunteer, I mean, he.
And again.
He's a part-time employee, I, anyway, why don't you take over?
But I rest my case on us being the second thoughts.
Yes.
So the, all the money that you're asking for, you're looking to totally a hundred percent reinvest back into the housing?
Yes.
That's all I have. I just have one question about the board, since I can't talk about the board and stuff like that, but I do have some concerns, and I think Michelle's brought up some, some concerns there too, that I agree with, but that's all I have to say about that. I just wanted to ask a question about the board, but I can't do that. Do you have a full board right now?
Right now, yes.
And in your meetings, I'm asking, is, 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 is your board at the meetings mostly consistent, they're there at all times?
Yes, now, we have one, one person, and I know you, who else, and I know you know who I'm talking about, she's been quite ill for the past four, five months. So she just showed up for the first time at our June meeting, but other than that, yes, we get fairly, uh, regular, uh.
Let's, let's get back to the, the question. You know, you know, I've, I've been thinking about this from day one, when we talked about this, and I know we talked about a hundred percent. And I was just sitting here thinking, you know, council seems to be going toward the fifty percent, uh, area. I'm leaning toward that fifty, maybe even sixty percent. I'm not sure what council would like, maybe.
I'd go to sixty, I just don't want it to be indefinite.
Right.
So at least we're not giving over the, giving the boot, but we're getting, you know, quite a bit, and, uh. So it could be twenty-five thousand.
Quite clear, may I say something?
Sure.
Well, you know, we're, first of all, if we're reimbursing the housing authority, they're not partners. We're, we're giving them money to, to cooperate with us.
Well, we.
But, but number two is, if we're still going to have to provide, um, security services to the police, fire department, that indebtedness and that obligation is not going to go away. We cannot just figure out at this point how big Trinidad will be, what our fire department's going to cost us, what our police department's going to cost us. I, you know, I'm thinking about substantially lower than the fifty percent. I don't know, and, and I have a question, Mayor. Who, did any, anybody encumber us or sign a contract to encumber us to, uh, get rid of the, uh, payment to the housing authority? Was there any agreements or guarantees?
No, 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 there was no guarantee, that's all there is to this conversation.
And I really don't want to argue that point, Ms. Mayor, but, um, I'm at that table feeling we had reached an agreement. And credibility and respect are pretty important to me. And maybe I misunderstood that this was all maybes, ands, or ifs, and I thought a person's word was as good as their signature.
I don't recall agreeing to that, do you recall me agreeing to that?
Yeah, I actually, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't question.
I don't recall agreeing to that, do you recall agreeing to that?
What I recall at the end of that last meeting, Michelle, and you might not have been there, I, I don't, I might have to go back and look at the, I recapped what we had talked about, and we had talked about four things. One was pilot relief, two is, uh, and this is what I'd asked for originally, was some help in some of our sidewalks, because they're, they're in dire need of replacements.
I remember that.
Sidewalks and curb cuts. Uh, third, I asked for assistance in putting, uh, bridges out of poverty on, as a community forum for everybody, and I asked for two thousand dollars for the city's contribution. Seems to me there is a fourth caveat now, but I don't remember what that is or was, and I would check my minutes. But yeah, I walked away thinking we had an agreement.
On a hundred percent of the pilot.
We're talking about a hundred percent of twenty-one thousand, I don't know what your total revenue is, but it's really a very small amount of money. One time in my twelve years.
You said twenty-one plus seven and a half.
Okay, well.
That's twenty-eight.
Okay.
And you said it's going to be higher this year, which is going to push it past third.
Significantly higher, it, it may be slightly higher.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry that I don't have those calculations yet, I just, just got our audit in today, as a matter of fact.
What if, what if we agreed to just not both of those, but you're talking about the twenty-one thousand in that particular, that particular?
Well, actually, Corazon probably needs the money more than the housing authority, so, uh, I, I really don't want to take Corazon off the table.
So they're the seven?
Yes.
Two city council members cannot bind the council.
I understand that.
That never ever would have happened. I'm not going to.
No, no, I understand that, I, I, I do understand that. But again, that's what I walked away from the table, saying, because my first thing, and, and I'm sorry I'm like this, but, you know, I said, what's in it for us?
And I walked away from that, you know, we had talked about the hundred percent, but also, we'd also talked about possibly less. I do remember that part of it.
And, and I'm sure that may have been in the conversation, I can't say that it wasn't.
Because that was one that, the item that I brought up, and I, I said, you know, we need to maybe consider possibly less, and that's when we walked away.
And, and I will walk away from this meeting happy with less.
L E S S.
But, uh, it, it makes it very difficult then to want a partner with the city again, when we're not sure they're credible.
Never take forward two city council members or one mayor, it's just not a good thing to do.
I don't know, I'm, I'm the daughter of a longtime Pueblo city councilman, he served about forty years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two people, I don't, I don't recall that conversation at all, I remember something about curb cuts, and I think even that was indefinite, that was, we'll look into it, we'll see what it can do for you, but there was never an agreement on my part, because I would have bit my tongue before I did that.
The only thing we did agree to was some of the curb cuts, we did that.
Greg, Greg.
Uh, the other thing too is, part of this pilot's paid to the school district, part of it's paid to the city. Before you forgive a pilot to a school district, I think you would have a conversation.
We're, we're not asking to forgive to the school district. Um, this, what's on that sheet of paper, you can see where, uh, twenty-five percent goes to the school district and seventy-five percent goes to the city. And all I'm asking for is the ci, there, there's no way I would approach the school board, I mean, maybe every, any day, I didn't get. So no, that's just strictly the seventy-five percent of, of the total pilot payment that would go to the city.
I, I mean, whenever I find myself in this position, like perhaps your father did, I always ask myself, what is in the best interest of the city of Trinidad? That's why I'm here. The city of Trinidad includes, Corazon includes, well, how?
Trinidad Housing.
Trinidad Housing Authority includes the school district. And it also was in the best interest of the city of Trinidad, as you may have heard earlier, to agree with the La Porta project, to the extent that we're going to lose a lot of interest over a long period of time on money that we could be making way out. But in the grander scheme of things, it's in the best interest of the city to have La Porta. In the grander scheme of things, it's in the best interest of the city to have ArtSpace. In the grander scheme of things, it's important to have those entities which you represent, and housing, public or otherwise. It works to everyone's advantage, and I think the position that I'm finding is, how can we manage this in such a way that it addresses those needs for the best interest of the city in a reasonable fashion?
You know what I'd like to see happen, and, and again, I'm speaking as a citizen, not as the director of the housing authority, but I think we need to form a housing commission, because I think we've got lots of, lots of good ideas, lots of development proposals, but no central place to talk about what we really, really need. And about two years ago, I had approached Mr. Sun and also the gentleman that runs COP, asking for just that. Can we have a day when we sit down, every entity that's involved with housing people in Trinidad? And, and there, there was actually more than, than just what you mentioned. That never happened, it never materialized, but I do think, I think we need to work in concert with each other.
Agreed. And, and that, to my point is this, if we can agree that your participation in the ArtSpace projects benefits the city of Trinidad, and, and I understood what you said earlier, recognition and integrity and, and that sort of thing, we want to, I want it to be true to that honor, but at the same time, we can't permit two agreements that weren't made. So if we can negotiate, comes to mind, if we can negotiate a reasonable amount that allows you the opportunity to better serve those entities which you represent, allows the city to continue to maintain some financial situation, financial resources, to continue to address those concerns that are our primary issues. And, and I guess the question is, now, what amount? What amount is reasonable to you, aside from a hundred?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I guess I, in, in your mind, is there a reasonable number, a acceptable number?
I, I was surprised I needed to come up and make this request personally, because I had thought it was a done deal. So forgive me.
If I'm putting you on the spot, I'd put you on the edge.
No, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm not going to argue, the, the, the choice is yours, the decision is yours.
Right.
You know, if we walk away with fifty percent of twenty-one thousand, that's eleven-five we have to put back into housing. You know, it's better than nothing.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I would just suggest, maybe this ought to be the subject of an executive session. And we could invite Ms. Shire, I also, I was kind of whispering to Greg while all this was going on, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be impolite, but someone who really has kind of been, you know, part of negotiations since this was, you know, in its infancy, was Ms. Marshall for the city. And of course, being mindful of the fact that she's with Dolan now, I'm just wondering if either Greg or I could kind of pick her brain about anything that might have been contemplated, anything that might have been talked about, might be nothing, but there, there might be something. And perhaps it would be easier to talk about this in an executive session for purposes of, um, contract negotiations.
We can't, we can't define a number today, anyway.
Well, exactly, so, and I think further information may be helpful, I think Ms. Shire makes many points, I, I think, just, I, I think that might be a good way to kind of advance the ball on, on this, you know, win or lose for all parties concerned. It just seems like that may be helpful, yes.
The one thing I just wanted to mention is that, uh, for your point zero zero one, which you are not out any dollars, you know, to invest in, in the. which you were not out any dollars, you know, to invest in, in the Space Creed project, it was just that, saying, "We're going to partner with you." And the project itself is a $19 million project. And it could have well gone by the wayside if you did not become a partner with us. A partner with us. So you are a very integral part in, in saving the Space Creed project. So I believe that a good discussion in an executive session is important at this point in time so we can get a little bit more.
Yeah, I'd like to reflect on it. I don't want to be, I don't want to be a hard ass.
Yeah.
Is it, you know, we have executive sessions, and this is something I wanted to bring up before, about people first that go into an executive session with us. This is a city's decision and talk, that we talked about. And I know, like you say, like Ms. Shire with D and R and whatever and stuff like that. But to me, I, I really don't think that when we're discussing a matter with, with any kind of term of housing projects, or La Porta or whatever, in the executive meeting, that those people should be in attendance, I mean, in the executive meeting when we're discussing city business. There's a lot of things that go on in an executive session that has to be dealing with the city and not with Mrs., Mrs. Shire or whatever, that has to be knowing about it. Yeah, it is, man, so I'm telling you the truth. I've been on this council a long time. And I firmly believe when, when things are set up this way, I firmly believe that in any type of executive session, the only ones that should be in that executive session in any, anything that's discussed about this city should be you, the city manager, and this council, and the mayor. And that's the way it should be, but it hasn't been for the last couple of years.
Well, the thing about it, you got to remember, is that anyone can be invited into an executive session.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
You showed me the law of... Counselor, Mayor, my apologies, I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to say that one of the four, one of the four primary exceptions to the general rule of not having an executive session is you have to fit into the categories, and that is for contract negotiations. And clearly is contemplated, counsel, with all due respect, that during contract negotiations, you're going to invite in the person that you're negotiating, negotiating on that contract with. I understand your point, I truly do. Some of the recent sessions we've had have had a lot of people involved, and that, I understand that. You know, frankly, one of the purposes of executive sessions is for me to give legal advice. And the more people we have in a confidential attorney-client session, the more I worry about it. However, for this purpose, and I, I think that's a good conversation to have, but for this purpose, we couldn't have an executive session for contract negotiations without Ms. Shire. And we just couldn't do it because nobody would be here to tell you what her perspective is. In other words, it would be unilateral, and it would be, it wouldn't be negotiations. It would be you deciding what you're going to do. Maybe I'm...
But you're dealing with, like I said, the city here.
Right.
And so should not the public or the...
You know, let's go ahead and go away from this. And the reason why I'm saying is we're getting way outside of the discussion we're trying to do. And we want to be able to, and I think that would be a discussion that you need to clarify, you know, for council and send to us in a memoir or however.
Happy to do that.
Let's do that one.
Okay.
I just have one other question. I typically copy these for our council members. Do you want to copy?
What is that now?
It's our, it's our, I just got our audit books today. I just took them right out of the book. I mean, boss, right? So you would like to copy them? Okay. I'll, I'll have them tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go plan and make an executive session around this.
Sounds great.
Okay, item one. Onto item two, which is AMI opt-out ordinance. Mike, I think you have given us some information on that. So let's see.
So thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, for the last year or more, we've been discussing and are currently in the process of changing out all of our meters to AMI automatic metering systems so that we can gather all our utility data for billing. One of the first steps was go through an audit on every meter. So Johnson Controls and their subcontractor, PMI Professional Meter Installers, have been going house to house, meter to meter, getting pictures, getting information off the meters. Their, their age, you'd be surprised as how old our meters are. That's, it's a shame, really. But anyway, so we're going through all that. And in that process, there's been some, some people who want to opt out. They just said, "No, I don't want, I'm here to change, I'm good with it," or, you know. There's others who have significant reasons. And one of the most significant was Mr. Boss. He, Michael Boss, he came into my office. He's done a lot of research. He's given me a binder that, on information, and I've asked him to come here. But what you have before you is a developed and opt-out program. If, if you do not want the meter, and it's council's choice if they want to actually enact this program, you can opt out. If you opt out, there's a cost involved. They're going fully automated to read these meters. So if you opt out, we'll put in a meter without the radio transmitter in it, so it won't send signals, you won't have any RF signals going out. But what that means is we will have to send out a chat to put in a different kind of meter or disable the actual radio in that meter, and then we'll have to go read them monthly. In the process of the audit, there was approximately 20, 20 meters that people had said they had want to opt out. Not sure, you know, if when we get down to it, if they will opt out. Like I said, many reasons. Some of them privacy issues, they think we're watching them. It's a secure network, it goes through the firewall. That's information for billing only. But what you have before you is a resolution and an opt-out application form. The opt-out application form that I've come up with in researching several communities that offer opt-out, there's some that don't. I've broken down the cost. See, that's in the staff memo. To opt out, it's in the table. I've got to refine this cost because I didn't be quite, wasn't quite able to get all the wages and everything in there. Trying to figure out, okay, where are these people opting out? And if they opt out, how far? I'm going to have to analyze their truck rolls per month, how much it costs to take somebody off their duty because we won't have meter readers per se anymore. We'll have the meter techs and their, their, you know, and the meter readers will be absorbed into the city workforce. But we're going to have to pull them away from that and send to read meters monthly. And then they'll come back with the meter read, take it into billing and say, "Here's the reads." They'll have to manually key them in. Those meters will not have the capability of us utilizing the program to its fullest. There'll be like a site set where we can analyze how much water usage we have, how much electric usage we have, when are the peak times. We're doing all this so that we can be more efficient and actually help the customer. But in that table, there's a breakdown of truck rolls, cost of the utility clerk, cost of the meter clerk. This isn't written stone yet, but what I've preliminary figured out, it's going to be a $92 one-time charge to go out there and put this meter in, and then $37 a month to go read the three meters.
In total or peat?
In total. It's going to, they're going to roll to one customer and read three meters.
Why are we doing this? I don't, I don't really quite understand. Why, why not require the people to come in with the 24th century?
Well, we'll let Mr. Boss explain that, why he doesn't want it.
Radio waves.
With radio waves and health reasons. They're, all the, everything is FCC approved. All kinds of communities have them. Some of them that, for instance, Boulder uses Exile Energy, they offer no opt-out. San Isabel Electric Association, which is local and has radio read meters, they offer no opt-out. Colorado Springs offers an opt-out. There's a $109, $20 monthly fee. The Sedalia area has a rural electric association. Theirs is $120, and so forth down the line. Seattle, who's very progressive, theirs is $124 with a $15.87 monthly fee.
My question is that if this is done before the meters are swapped out, they won't have to pay that $97 front time fee.
Correct, correct.
So this is for the future, where people will come in and say, "I don't want this." That's where that fee will be reduced.
Correct, correct. But currently, we're, we're in the process. We've, we've installed meters throughout town. We're testing the, the radio signal now in meters. We have, Chris, 12?
No, as of this afternoon, there are 16 that have been installed so far.
So we're starting, so if, if somebody wants to opt out, you're correct. Then there's the $92 fee to go back out, disable the radio and do all that. If, if they opt out before we install, I can see no trouble.
Is there a legal obligation to offer this stuff?
None that I know of. But in my research with communities that have gone this way, there's been a lot of people questioning, and Mr. Boss is here, and I've talked to the mayor and city manager, and we're going to give them some time to speak, if you don't mind.
I meant, it really has to say, but I listen very attentive. I thought to what you said. We have meters that are beyond our reasonable life expectancy.
Yes.
To councilwoman Viles' positions, we're coming safely, like what you said, into the 20% fee, so we can be more efficient to the benefit of the consumer.
Correct.
And I have yet to understand why it's not a good idea to do that. But I'm going to listen.
My, my main question is, so we're doing this, and in doing this, our savings is going to pay for our cost.
Correct.
Is that figured in there by not? I mean, is, does this $37 a month going to cover what we're going to lose in savings to pay for this? Or is it just going to cover our expense to have someone for them not being in it? We're going to lose money because it's part of our savings that's going to pay for this, correct?
Uh, correct. I didn't figure that savings into this. Yes. Approximately 20 customers, 20 meters out of 12,600.
But one of those 20 could be one of the meters that we're getting ripped off of. That's the problem.
But, but here's, here's the issue. We are changing every meter. We are not, if you opt out, doesn't mean you get to keep the meter you have. We are changing.
All right, okay.
Yes.
So then we're going to be paying without getting savings? That's going to pay for them?
It's going to pay for our truck rolls, and they're going to have to pay.
You could have said it.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Is that how you came, you, you went down to the NATS, but...
Well, I tried, and I'm still working on it. When I present to, if we go, if council wants this taken further, I'm going to get even closer to that NAP.
Well, I was thinking if you rounded it off and rounded it up, like to 100 for the installation and 40, 40 and... That's, that's going to be a hassle.
It will be a hassle internally. It'll be a hassle on customers who, I don't, I don't know.
I think any time, I think any time that you have to, an overall program like this, and you have to pay, pay special attention to a few, they should be, you know, dotted with a harder fee. That's my thing.
If it's something that they specifically want.
Right.
To me, to go in conformity with the other upgrades that we spend quite a bit of time in Africa to doing. But let's hear Mr. Boss.
Mr. Boss?
Mr. Boss, we'll do, we'll give you about 10 minutes, hopefully.
I've got a presentation that's right at 10. I just want to mention, Saffay, New Mexico, has all analog meters. I've talked to the man down there who's responsible with that program. They've got meters that are still working since 1948. I know some meters, they get old and they do need to be replaced. One other comment before I get started. Meter readers are really eyes and ears on the ground and very often spot gas leaks and other emergencies. Without them, you're going to lose that oversight. But I'd like to thank you, Mayor Phil Rico, city manager Greg Sund, Mike Valentine, Audra Garrett, and members of the city council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'll begin with a quote from myths versus facts. "The truth about smart meters printed by the Smart Grid Consumer Collaborative." And in spite of the name, it's really an advocacy group for the industry. Quote, "Smart meters must meet safety standards spelled out in the National Electric Safety Code. They show resistance to heat, fire, voltages, surges, and self-heating." How about this? Quote, "A lawsuit has been filed by John Baker, former employee of Census, a smart meter manufacturer. The suit states Mr. Baker has direct personal knowledge that Census and Southern Company Utility have installed approximately 1 million Icon A meters in Alabama homes with knowledge that the meters are seriously defective and pose a substantial fire hazard, and that at least two Alabama homes have burned as a result." Here's another. "The Australian Metropolitan Fire Brigade launched an official investigation into fires linked to smart meters, November 2011. They ordered all firefighters to report fires where smart meters are present and has advised officers not to allow power companies to take the meters from the scene. But in many instances of fried appliances, electrical wire arcing, burned outlets, exploding and overheating meters, hundreds of these stories exist if you search the web." Back to myth versus facts. Quote, "Truth, just as the banking, credit card, and cable industries have provided secure access to your information online, the utility industry is poised to do the same, to safeguard your data." We get hacks every day that we hear about. It's a phenomenon in our age, so. "The vulnerability of the energy industry's new wireless smart grid will inevitably lead to lights out for everyone," according to leading cyber expert David Chung. "The entire power grid will be at risk, being taken down by cyber attack. It's only a matter of time." Former CIA Director James Woolsey has said, quote, "A so-called smart grid that is as vulnerable as what we've got is not smart at all. It's a really, really stupid grid." Despite industry assurances, the wireless world is not, defeat not, secure. Suppose we get into a war with Russia or China? Just a, just a thought. "All of the wireless industry promotional materials have the following in common. They resort to hasty generalizations and overarching statements about no health risks, but they misrepresent the state of the science. There's an old saying, 'All generalizations are false,' including this one. The wireless technology maintains a strict adherence to outlawed and outdated, sorry, outdated and flawed FCC safety standards. These standards address thermal effects only while ignoring non-thermal and long-term adverse health effects. The promotional material ignores the WHO, World Health Organization Declaration 2011, that non-ionizing RF is a possible Class IIb human carcinogen. Don't let the word possible throw you. Asbestos is still referred to as a possible carcinogen, but we all know it's bad." Here's what the Smart Grid Consumer Collaborative says. "Truth, in-depth review of the scientific literature of the World Health Organization revealed that the small amount of..." revealed that the small amount of RF energy produced by smart meters is not harmful to human health. Now, this fact sheet, right here, was copyrighted two thousand thirteen, printed two years, two years after the World Health Organization came out with their statement regarding non-ionizing RF. Surely, the Smart Grid Consumer Collaborative is aware of this fact, but they make no mention of it. There is consistent avoidance of controversy in the promotional material of the wireless industry. The industry pretends it doesn't exist. By controversy, I mean the scientific debate surrounding the negative health effects of non-ionizing radiation. No surprise here, as the industry wishes to sell its technology. The safety of wireless devices such as cell phones and smart meters is not as simple and clear-cut as anyone in the industry would have us believe. Back to myth versus facts. Truth, RF emitted by smart meters is well below the limits set by FCC. Yes, they are. But it should be noted, the US safety standards for RF exposures are among the worst in the world. Other countries have set much lower limits. The safe level of EMF RF in the United States is five hundred eighty percent higher than in Russia. Fifty-eight thousand percent above the safe limit in Salzburg, Austria. What do they know in Salzburg, Austria, that we don't? Here are some facts. There are no biochemists working for the FCC. The current standard was adopted in nineteen ninety-six and is based on science that is fifty years old. For years, there's been, been scientific evidence that adverse effects occur at non-thermal exposure levels thousands of times below, below the levels that the FCC says is safe. The FCC standard was adopted at the recommendation of two non-government organizations comprised mostly of engineers and ex telecom executives. That's the IEEE and the American National Standards Institute. The more one researches the subject, the more evidence one finds pointing to an endemic conflict of interest in the World Health Organization and FCC. They are part of the problem, not the solution. Journalist Norm Alster has noted, quote, "The FCC has granted the industry's wishes so often that it qualifies as a captured agency." Hundreds of physicians and scientists from around the world have urged regulatory agencies such as the FCC and World Health Organization to lower acceptable limits of RF exposure to protect the public. Three such appeals have been the Selatan Scientific Statement, two thousand eleven, BioInitiative, two thousand twelve, and emfscientist.org, two thousand nineteen. The appeals continue to be ignored. The science shows there are genotoxic effects from RF exposure, including altered gene expression and DNA fragmentation. Among the thousands of peer-reviewed studies, there is not a single one that establishes a safe RF level. And yet, the industry wants to, wants to assure us that their cell phones and smart meters are safe. Now RF is not the only danger of smart meters. They have a switch mode power supply that generates dirty electricity. Our bodies can't handle a highly variable current. These electromagnetic currents cause the bonds holding our DNA together to break, increasing the god, risk of cancer. Science has discovered that the intermittent pulse of a smart meter, rather than a continuous wave signal, may actually cause more harm than your cellphone or Wi-Fi and at much lower power levels. I'm almost done. Physicians worldwide are treating patients who report adverse health effects following the installation of smart meters. The list of symptoms includes sleep problems, anxiety, headaches, ringing in the ears, concentration and memory problems, eye pain, cardiac symptoms, heart palpitations, heart arrhythmias. Smart meters have even been known to stop pacemakers, and they interfere with your smart baby monitors. They interfere with all of your smart appliances or can. Thousands of studies correlate long-term RF exposure with diseases such as cancer, neurological disease, reproductive disorders, immune dysfunction. A growing number of people are experiencing a biological symptom known as EHS, electromagnetic hypersensitivity. It is neither fiction nor psychosomatic. In Sweden, EHS is fully recognized as an impairment. It is estimated that three to eight percent of the population has been severely affected by it. About thirty percent have been mildly affected. The fact is, all of us are being affected at a cellular level, whether we feel it or not. EHS is an increasing problem, not yet acknowledged by society at large. We have become addicted to wireless devices, which have been sold to us as a convenience or as a form of entertainment. Cell phones and wireless apps, iPads, Wi-Fi, wireless baby monitors, smart speakers, smart home security systems, smart appliances, smart meters, and the smart grid, which encompasses the Internet of Things. The current ambient levels of exposure, when you combine this all together, clearly demonstrate that our existing public safety standards are obsolete. Historically, safety standards haven't kept up with technology. And new wireless technologies affect living organisms in ways that our antiquated safety limits have not foreseen nor protected against. And now we are adding smart meters to the equation.
So it's been well over ten minutes if, if you...
I'm, I'm, I get one paragraph. I get one paragraph. I'm in my other, and my throat's dry and it's slowing me down.
I understand, I understand, thank you.
I really, I need some, need some water. Okay, we're now adding smart meters to the equation. The smart meter seems to be a tipping point for many people.
Sir.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, from Councilwoman Vowles.
Oh, oh, thank you.
I don't want you to go on and on and on.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
I have a first condition and it just, it's dry and my tongue is like marshmallow.
We don't want you to like carload and hydrate.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, slowing down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Och, gracias. Can talk a little faster? Yes, we're adding smart meters to the equation, that's better. The smart meter seems to be a tipping point for many people. They lived or worked in a wireless environment and had no obvious health issues, or they were living with their growing symptoms until a smart meter was installed on their home. Customers and citizens have the right and expectation not to be harmed by their utility meters or the utility grid. People with American Disabilities Act, many of them are, it's actually in violation. Smart meters are in violation of the EAD Act, by the way. Many utilities have failed to act in good faith regarding this matter and have acted with wanton disregard for human health and life. And we have many, many, many lawsuits about smart meters. And it's, it's a phenomenon that's growing and it's not going to go away. Here in Trinidad, I believe it is time to go public with this information. I've been in conversation with Mike Valentine, and we've been in conversation for over three months now. I have not yet gone public, I would hope that we could join together in this effort. It is unfortunate that the city of Trinidad, like many other communities in the US, has embarked on a project to install a technology which has already proven to be a huge source of liability. I'm requesting a moratorium on any further installation of smart meters until a smart meter opt-out program has been put into place and the public is informed about such a program. And hopefully, we can get some public input on that before that program, all of the details of it are, are put into place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I do have, uh, do you wanna know who else I am? I think you've got one of these.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do for charity.
Should you go ahead and pass it up for me?
Yeah, would you please? Thank you, yes.
Well, I think council goes that we are already under contract with the company for installation of these meters. And what we're here today to discuss is the opt-out option for the public if they wish to do so. But if they wish to do so, it's going to cost them, you know, additional money. That's really where it stands today. So that's really the, the basis of our work session today. We can't put a moratorium on it, because then we would be in violation of our contract. So that would be, so, excuse me, sir, but if you want to sit down, I would, I would, we'd let us discuss this now.
Okay, I just have one question, though, maybe about a...
Way up for town.
No question?
Yeah.
It's about exist, it'd be about existing smart meter, or not smart meter, but an existing analog, it's working. Thank you very much.
That's, you know, that's the way I'm reading this and the reason why we're here. So let's get some conversation going with council. You have any questions?
Not right now.
Rusty?
So homeowners only make their decision. And if you got a house right in the middle with both houses on each side that choose to go ahead, we're gonna have the same effects regardless, just 'cause the one meter's not there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all we got.
Yeah, I don't have any comments. I think that if the Russians come after the grid, they're gonna go for the transmission grid, not for smart meters. And I don't think anyone really cares what your monthly utility bill is. That's my only comment. I have no knowledge of the health effects of these things. It's hard for me to believe that these health effects are just being ignored. Um, you know, there was a scare about using cell phones ten, twelve years ago. Nothing's, no, nothing has ever materialized showing that, that a cellphone is difficult or life-threatening. So that's, that's my only commentary.
Uh, my thoughts are is, you know, if someone wants something that's different, they should be able to have an option. It may not be what we're kind of aligned to do right now, to help our infrastructure, to alleviate costs, to save money. Um, but if they, if someone wants to have something different that doesn't align with what we all feel, then is not too much of a interference with our daily routine, we should allow it. Now, if we have a number that turns out to be like over twenty percent of the populace that wants to do this opt-out, I feel that that might be challenging, but the same token, this is America. And if someone doesn't wanna follow the government to exact T, then they should have that opportunity, if they're willing to pay for their own exception to the rule. That's my thought.
Yeah, well, after Mr. Boss gave all those symptoms about a smart reader, do you have a reader have, I think I've got one in my house, 'cause I have all those symptoms. I'm seriously, I have, I don't count sleep well. I've had heart palpitations, but my doctor said it was because I'm an old person.
You know, you were elected to office a year and a half ago, and that's...
That's...
You're eleven here.
But it's, you know, I mean, the symptoms, this is beside the point with the symptoms he listed. Everybody in this room probably has those symptoms, but beside that point, I agree, they should have an option to opt out if they want to. But I don't think it should be at the expense of the city or a project that we have devoted a lot of time and money to. I think if, if people are gonna opt out, I think it should come at cost. And I don't think ninety-seven dollars is enough, I think it should be higher. And I should, I think the monthly fee should be higher as well, Mike. I mean, if, if you have utilities in your house, you're, you're not escaping these radio waves. I mean, look in, look at Trinidad at night, you see these cellphone towers all over town. Well, that's not circumventing their home, we're getting them all the time. And I don't believe that the majority, I always vote for what's best for the majority. But what's best, the, the majority shouldn't suffer for a few of the minority. So I say, yeah, opt out, but I think we need to increase those fees.
I, I tend to agree with all that has been said. I, I believe that there is so much around us now, that opting out is not going to solve a big problem for you individually. It creates a major, um, inconvenience is the appropriate word. It is a hiccup in the system in the way it's supposed to work. We're hoping to grudgingly take advantage of technology that's available. I think if it created the problems that were presented, more than likely wouldn't be here. I, I'm probably as distrustful as anybody else is about a lot of things. But at the same time, I can't believe that this would be, uh, just overlooked to the expense of a person's health. I agree that, uh, people shouldn't be forced to do certain things, but if they want to be the exception, then I believe that it should come at a, um, strong price. The, the tech, the technology's moving crazy. But technology, the survey has to be bad, the developments in the medical world. You talked about pacemakers, I might have to turn right away. But at the same time, I'm Willie McGambe. We're talking about Tesla and parking cars and self-driving cars and lane mitigation things. It's just overwhelming, the things that can happen. And everybody can find an exception to something that they don't particularly agree with. I rec, I recognize that and I respect that. But at the same time, in support of your position, I don't think it should be nominal or minimal. We need to, to make sure that the majority, the needs of the majority are served.
Can I, I don't think, I, I really wanna confirm with our, basically back of what Russ was saying. It should be by the property owners. If we do allow this, we don't want it to be a rental tenant who comes in and changes the application on a property owner's...
It's in, uh, it's in the application, it's where the property owner has to approve it. And, uh, there's ties to the property owner too, so.
Okay.
You know, my, my way of thinking of this thing, and I agree with pretty much everyone at the council with what we've said. You know, if something were to happen where the Russians or Iranians or whoever were to attack us, I think we got bigger problems than this, than this particular aspect here. The other thing we gotta remember, there are two things I wanna bring to people's mind. We have microwave ovens in our, in our homes. They told us, what, fifty years ago about microwave ovens? I have one, I use one. How many times a day do we use our microwave ovens? They said that was gonna affect us. Maybe I lost something up here, I don't know, but I, I haven't seen anything otherwise. The other thing that's interesting is that I worked in an industry that they always talked about pressure-treated material, about the arsenic that was in the pressure-treated material and how it was affecting people. They were saying the amount of arsenic that went into the pressure-treated material was so minimal that we get more arsenic from the ground naturally than we do from that. So there again, we're, we're, we're just piling stuff up to, and I, I don't know what the end result is, but needless to say, I think sometimes we're over, maybe we're trying to, we're trying to save ourselves from. We, when we entered into this agreement, we had, it was an ordinance. We had public opinion, the public opinion. No one came forward at that time to give the pros or the cons to this. That's when we should have heard this issue, not now. Mike, as far as I think what Karen was saying about increasing the fees, maybe what we need to do is give us a couple of different scenarios, rather than just one. Give us a couple of different scenarios for costs, okay?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
With all this data and all this stuff and, and city halls are already set up with tighter technology to handle all this kinda stuff, our, our computers, I don't know that much about computers and stuff, but our computers and everything are ready to handle these things.
but our computers and everything are ready to handle these things as far as giving radio signals or how, how that works?
The whole system comes with the computer system. It's virtual, it's cloud-based. Um, the, uh, there's all kinds of happening. The RNI, which receives all the, the data for the meter reads, meshes with Tyler and bills out. So it's, instead of the meter readers coming in with their handhelds and setting them in the dock, it's actually happening and, and it's, it's, it's gonna be...
Correct. Well, through the process, yes.
Just a question. I know you're a really busy guy. You don't need to be counting pennies here. Why don't you just take the cost that you've estimated and double it?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah. Well...
I mean, I, I think people should have the right to, I think I'd agree with, you know, but it, it cannot be cheap.
No. And when you stop and figure out, I mean, I always look at this as an employer. You figure wages, then you figure benefits, then you figure, uh, contributing taxes that an employer pays. It gets up there.
And then you gotta figure, are you gonna replace the light bulb?
I haven't gotten that.
So, uh, what I'm hearing is, um, what I presented was a resolution 'cause it's setting out a policy. I don't believe we have to have an ordinance to do an opt-out policy. I could bring this to council at the next regular meeting, and you will have an opt-out policy, okay?
I think you're right. If you have a resolution, yes.
It may be a little bit of a piece of sanity. I, I wrote it down. Yep, I did. I've also spoken to Fountain, which, um, they're, they're doing the, the whole change out. As a matter of fact, I'll say this, they had AMR, which is radio reads where the vehicle drives around. And they didn't have any issues with AMR. And those meters transmit more RF frequency than they do. And now with the AMI, the newer meters don't transmit as much RF. And so they're having more people call in now. When, so they're leaving their AMR meters in, which are, have more RF. Fountain, Boulder, um, Colorado Springs, uh, Mr. Rango, San Isabelle, Savelia, I've talked to them all. And they all, two of them said, no, no opt-out. San Isabelle was one, and Exile Energy was the other.
I have one last question. I'm reading the resolution here, and it's, it's going specifically towards single-family residential homeowners?
Uh, we got that. I kinda, you know, that's gotta be for, uh, utility users, all, all utility users. Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I was, I didn't know for some reason if we were omitting commercial people from this program?
Nope.
Okay, so that might be something. And then I also noticed you have the attachment one, and I don't see it in the body of the language where you have it mentioned as an attachment one, as the, the formula of sorts. So that might wanna be something that you might wanna just kinda check out.
Sure.
Because otherwise, it doesn't state in here a cost or a fee structure in your resolution. It has it in the attachment, which I see, but, um, you may wanna just notate that, if you will, please.
Yeah, the only thing that, you know, if this all goes through, I think, are you going, those, for those people that decide they wanna opt-out, uh, are you going to send them a letter stating what those costs are going to be? Yeah, well, it'll be in the opt-out request form. That's true. Um, they'll have to fill it out. Um, and it'll have to be complete. We'll have to check rec- records with Los Angeles County to make sure the owner agrees. When that's all complete, then we'll either, depending on what they give us, or we'll email them or write them a letter saying, okay, you're in the opt-out and you will be charged per month. Right, thank you, Mike. Thank you. Okay, item number three, utility shop ordinance, I think that's, Cheryl?
So do you have the search screen, or would you like handouts?
Yeah, give us handouts. I'll run to it and look for it. Oh. You're there?
She's there.
Thank you. Any more, more?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Is it in the...
I got some. Oh. So we've been talking about this a while. We have a lot of problems. We've been trying to push the collections on our accounts. We've been doing it since October two thousand seventeen, and honestly, we haven't really seen a great result. I wanna say this morning, they had twelve to fifteen disconnects. It's, it, being forceful, requiring them to pay, sending them the bright pink letter, it's, it's not really grabbing their attention. Um, so most importantly, the biggest problem I see is that we give them far too long to pay their balance. So that when we do disconnect them, they're, they're so over their heads that they can't pay the entire amount. So for example, a person that has a six hundred dollar balance of three bills, when they get disconnected, they're required to pay that six hundred dollars in full plus new deposits. Well, they don't have it. So my first thought is to shrink the collection date. Right now, we're disconnecting them at sixty-eight. I want it to be at thirty. So that's where we're gonna start. We'll see what council thinks. Um, you, I believe you've seen my customer examples. Um, the first one, customer number one. So at, at this point, this particular customer, because I've actually pulled data from a real customer, when he hits disconnect date, he would be required to pay four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that's at Christmas time sometimes, and we just don't have the money. And it's sometimes really hard to get that amount taken care of. If we were to switch it into collect within thirty days, they would be, they would have to reconnect at three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Still, it's a significant amount, but it, it's, it's a little bit more doable than the four hundred and twenty-eight. It doesn't include the additional hundred and seventy-nine dollars, um, which would be, let me see, I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, and then what would happen is sometimes when we do this to these people, they just walk away. They'll walk away, they leave us with the balance, they'll find somewhere else to live. They, they leave us with a bad debt. So you can see the difference in their bad debt, um, relate relative to their deposits, which is also what I wanna discuss, is increasing their deposits. Um, customer number one, um, this person already has doubled, uh, on his accounts, uh, double deposits, which means he was disconnected. And when he came back, we required him to pay another deposit of, I think it's, um, thirty dollars for electric. So, um, we wouldn't require doubles again. Again, to reconnect would be three hundred and ninety-eight dollars versus the two hundred and thirty, thirteen dollars. So we're trying to make it a little bit more reachable for them. And again, if they were to walk away, we would write off bad debt of four hundred and eighteen dollars, or we would write off bad debt, or we would actually owe them a refund of three hundred and seven. So, I, I mean, even cutting it back by tho- that many days, um, there's, they still have a portion to pay, but it's just not as significant. Of course, these are winter bills, so they're higher. So it's a little bit more workable in the summer. Um, I did use some very extreme billing cases. We actually have customers that have bills that are that high. That's on page two. Uh, customer number two with a three hundred and, well, we'll just take customer number two. The required reconnect fee would be eight hundred and eight dollars. We change the timeframe, it would drop it to five hundred and fifty. Um, one thing I'd like to note is that when they get to this position, they often they'll go ask for assistance from COG or, um, ACTS or any of those groups. And actually Lana's from ACTS, her biggest question to me is, how did you let them get so high? I can help, but I can't give you eight hundred dollars. So again, this would bring their balances to a lower amount, so that they probably could handle it and reconnect. Um, our deposits, they were listed on the second page, I believe. And it shows you what our current and our actuals are. Excuse me, our actuals and our proposed. This is also for council's consideration. I gave you, um, the, our utility, our neighbor comps, so that you can see that we are extremely low on our deposit collection. Um, San Isabelle, for their, their utility deposit required is three hundred dollars, and we charge thirty-one. So, um, people actually, when they come in and we tell them that they need to pay seven fifty to connect water, they're flabbergasted, like, seven hundred and fifty dollars for water? And we're like, no, seven dollars and fifty cents, so they can't believe it. So we're extremely low on those deposits. Um, so we're proposing to increase them to try to get into the game, so that we can protect the city. And then also the reconnect fees, um, we've increased those just a little. And then find the, oh, I'm sorry, the connect fees and then the reconnect fees, so... And then our default deposits, we're not positive what we wanna do there currently. If we disconnect electric, we require them to pay another thirty dollars for a deposit. The Situation Room would require them to pay another hundred and fifty dollars, so that they would have a three hundred dollar deposit on electric. They would, they'd have their deposits doubled. And then, as I was discussing earlier, the billing dates. Currently, you can see what happens here. We bill, we give them the due date, then we give them the five-day grace period. And right after that, we charge them one and a half percent interest. Then we send them a late notice at forty-five days. And by ti- by the time the disconnect date hits, they have sixty days, um, worth of billing. So I propose to shrink it to thirty. And we would like to get away from sending out the late notice. We've been sending it out, bright pink letter, um, it's due on this date. It's, it's, I mean, it says final notice, it's as bright, I mean, it's as obvious as can be. And when we disconnect them, and there you say, oh, we never got that. So...
We don't send it out certified mail, do we?
No, I can't even imagine. We're sending out at least two hundred per cycle, so eight hundred letters a month. No way, certified mail, we can't do that.
Okay.
Besides the amount of work that would take, I mean, that would be extremely difficult. So regarding the notice, uh, we talked to some other Tyler utility providers, the Tyler district, and they put in bright colored font, your utilities will be disconnected on this date if not paid in full on their regular bill. So that would be our attempts to notify. Anyway, this is just, um, something we'd like to start discussing. I think that there has to be changes. Most importantly is the amount of time between, um, their first bill and their disconnect date. We have to shrink that. I, I don't believe we have a choice. Mm-hmm. We're setting them up to fail, honestly. Um, one of the other, um, meter techs has been to tons of trainings with other meter techs. And, mm, let's see, LaHanta's, uh, policy is if they disconnect them, their electricity, and most, and what we're doing now is we're disconnecting electricity first, because that gets them in the door, usually. Uh, they don't like to go the evening without electricity. So LaHanta's practice is to disconnect them on the afternoon of a Tuesday. And they will not reconnect them until the following afternoon to fill the bite. I don't know, that's also up for consideration, the twenty-four hour reconnect time. Um, like I said earlier, it's not working right now. Uh, we disconnected however many today. When they come in, they don't have it, and, and I can't force it out of them. So we make a payment arrangement, they'll pay it, they get it taken care of, and then three months later, we're back, back to where we started. So it's not working. I thought it would, it didn't. And then the final note, and most, um, concerning is the amount of bad debt that we've written off in three years. That's, that's significant. So, uh, it's been decreasing over the past two years, um...
What's that dollar amount that looks in here?
Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So in two thousand sixteen, we wrote off a hundred and ninety thousand. In two thousand seventeen, we wrote off a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And then last year was our lowest amount of a hundred and nine thousand. So it's working a little bit, but, I mean, that's significant. So this is, um, for council's consideration. I think we'll have to discuss it a little bit more, could be, because this will actually amend the ordinance. This is a municipal utility ordinance, has to be amended.
Let's get them in comments. Go.
I just think we have to do what we have to do. We just can't keep operating in this kinda situ- did you say there's twelve or fifteen's today?
We have one cycle that's worse than the other. I think that could have been today's cycle. Um, an average now, I would say seven to ten per day, per week. And there, a lot of them are, uh, frequent, frequent disconnects. It's sad because they will get assistance from LEAP or COG or whomever, and we just don't see them again until they're disconnected. But had they been paying a minimum hundred and fifty dollar payment, they'd be ahead of the game.
Does that, that assistance, that, like, from LEAP and COG and all those, those go directly to the, to the customer, or don't...
It comes to us.
Okay, I was gonna say, because maybe that other money didn't stand somewhere else instead of being on the utility field, like, close to the city.
It comes to us, thankfully. I don't know what we could do if it didn't.
I'm nervous, I'm gonna take a, take a wire. Go ahead.
Now, in a time where our economy was nowhere near what it is now, and the amount of work that's out there, I could understand us being way more lenient. At this point in time, we can't afford to continue to do so. Um, we're not running a welfare, um, situation here. We gotta get them on board. I'm, I'm behind you a hundred percent on this.
I'm behind you a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I remember when I first came to Trinidad, I had to put down a deposit towards things. And then I remember it stating something like it would be refunded after a certain amount of time. Is that still being...
That's correct. The customer's in good standing, will receive their deposits back in full at eighteen months.
Okay.
And then in their ordinance, we would say, if they did do get disconnected after that time, they'll start over with new deposits.
Okay. Uh, I, I like the idea of this. I think, uh, the way that the program is right now, like you said, we're setting them up to fail. If we can catch them sooner, uh, I know what it's like for our business, sometimes trying to catch people who are those frequent flyers, if you will, of non-payments. It, it makes it challenging, and then their bill gets so big, it's like, why can't even go and take care of this at this point?
It'll get so high that, that they just disappear in the middle of the night. They, they just can't do it anymore because it just keeps growing and growing. And had they paid that hundred and fifty after they received assistance, it wouldn't, it wouldn't build like that. It's, it's hard to make them understand, but I, I don't know what else to do. I'm so frustrated, I thought when we started this in October, we'd chip away at it. It's, it's shocking. It makes me sad.
Now, this will go just towards the purple, or the person who is listed as the deposited agent, correct? So like, say if there's an apartment building, and the owner makes the tenants get the utilities in there, it would just be built to that particular person?
Oh, yes.
Okay, 'cause I had a conversation with Mr. Sund earlier, and he was thinking about going after the property owner.
I've been talking to other utility agencies, and they're in the same boat. And the only thing that, there was only one that, it's San Isabelle. They're the only ones that give the option for the landlord, the tenant, or whomever. I don't know what we could do in that situation with the landlords. We could require the landlord, if they start to rent a home, to put down the initial deposit. But again, in eighteen months, it would go back to them if they had a good tenant. I, I don't, I'm not sure, we're still working on that part.
What some cities do is they make the owner be the customer.
They can, they can ask you to bill it to the renter, but the owner is the customer. I don't like that.
I'm hoping that the, the higher deposit amounts would protect us somewhat.
You know, it's crazy when we're talking about this, but it's almost like human nature to push the envelope, push the envelope. I see it where people's priorities are so messed up that they, you know, it, it's crazy. But I, I'm one hundred percent in favor of this. Is there any benefit to delaying those discounts for prop payment? Do you, do you think that's a good program?
I, I know.
I mean, it's minimal, but I mean, if we're, we're revamping, maybe we should re-benefit that.
We could look into that. I know that, um, my uncle's business, Al's Gas, does that. And boy, those people are in there in ten days. They do not wanna miss that discount.
I mean, well, we have it now, right? Or is that the penalty?
No, we have a penalty, one and a half percent penalty after.
You give two different amounts on your utility.
Right, so the top amount is what to do.
Yeah.
And then if you're late.
But then aren't you just rewarding people for paying what they have consumed?
Yeah. I mean, a discount.
I don't want a discount. I just, I thought it was a discounted. It's a, it's a penalty if people, they have full, have, you know.
I, I think that, no, I, I would wait to see how this meter system works, see if we, uh.
No, we don't wanna do that.
I mean, if it was a for-profit situation, I could see where you could afford to give that percentage back in a certain degree. But we are, you know, a nonprofit government agency, so it's not like we're making any money off this. We're just paying the bills.
You know, it kind of concerns me though, when they're talking about the property owner versus the, uh, the occupant of a dwelling. How do we protect, or we don't protect the landlord because, say for instance, their tenant has their utility shut down and that property is in jeopardy?
There are some tenants or landlords that we worked with quite a while. We do notify them just, just because, because we wanna get it switched into their name as soon as possible so that the bill doesn't keep charging off to somebody who's disappeared on this. But also just because we don't want pipes to freeze and, right?
That's what might concern me.
I have one other question, excuse me, Mr. Sunday. Uh, what about when we have situations where you have people on medical needed devices? If they shut something down and that could be like a respirator or something like that, do we have situations that could be incurred on us?
We do. We have, um, they can provide us a doctor's note that will cover them for sixty days. But that doesn't mean after sixty days, if their bill goes away after sixty days, they're gonna owe what they owed plus two more months. And they can also submit one extension on that sixty days to ninety days. So we just put them in a bigger hole, but there is that opti- option.
It's, it's a good point, but if I have a medical device on which I'm dependent, I wanna make damn sure I'm keeping that damn going. You know, it's, it's not the city's responsibility to make sure I get oxygen at night. That's, that's crazy. I applaud you for all that you are doing. I, I, I really appreciate your compassion, your sensitivity to people's needs, but at the same time, your attention to duty. And that, what you are obligated to do is commendable. You're trying to find a workable arrangement. I support, I will support everything you bring forth.
Thank you.
Without question, because I know that you are heavily invested in trying to solve this as a problem that exists at personal level, from a professional level and all other arenas. And it's a matter, if nothing else, fairness to the people who do pay their bills on time. You know, that's just the way it rolls. Darwin, survival of the fittest, that's, that's the way it works. I need to be cold and calm, but, um, sometimes that's just the way it happens. And there are available resources for people in transitional need. But it's not intended to be a way of life for three generations. Thank you. You know, it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that what you're looking to, to correct. That's really the bottom line here. That's what we do here, in working with, together with you and, and staff. Out of curiosity, you mentioned that some of these people, what they do is they just go elsewhere. How do we track them?
We, we do turn it over for bad debt collections, unfortunately. If they ever collect, we only get fifty percent back.
But I'm saying that how do you track them if they move from this house to this house?
So a driver's license. They're required to present a driver's license when they apply.
So do you find, have many of those that you find?
What will happen is, uh, they'll say boyfriend and girlfriend, we split up, he moved out, can I switch it into my name? And they'll catch us sometimes on that. But when we require landlord leases, um, we find both tenants' names on there, so we can capture, catch them that way. Um, when somebody wants to switch over into their name, cause boyfriend left, we collect a new deposit. But other than that, no, we don't really, other than requiring a driver's license when they apply.
You answered my question. I was wondering, you know, the driver's license is the best way to do that. The other thing is that, you know, I do this myself, anyway, through my billing and I do a monthly thing and, you know, I'm ahead of the game, actually. But how many people take advantage of that monthly averaging system?
Oh, shoot, I, I didn't find that out. I, I don't know.
You have quite a few, or?
Yes, it's, let's see, something, no, I'm thinking of the auto draft. I'm sorry, I would have to ask for.
When, when, the people that are in arrears, and let's say they, you get them up to date. What would be the idea of just putting them automatically on a monthly averaging system regardless?
We, they have to sign up for it, but let me tell you, since March, when we, they've been coming in and disconnected, I'm like, if you get your income tax return, you need to pay this off. And then you sign up for automated billing, or, I'm sorry, the automatic.
Every?
Yeah.
It's called?
Budget billing. Yeah, you sign up for budget billing. And then I pull their figures for the last, their total for the twelve months, divide it up and say, look, you'd be paying two hundred dollars a month, every month. And at Christmas time, when your bill's four hundred dollars, you only have to pay two hundred. And it seems like I might have recruited maybe twenty, but the others, no.
Here's another thought. Um, I would say that these people that do this consistently, they've done this before. So why couldn't we ask them for the last place that they had a building to, whether it was in Buffalo or whatever, kinda like a background check? To see if they, you know.
A credit reference.
Their reference, I think.
That's correct, actually. Uh, who's backed that up? Fort Collins does that, so.
So I don't know. That, that, that's a thought.
Some folks are not only doing that with the city with utilities, they're doing it elsewhere in their life.
Yes.
They're not responsible. They're not paying their problems. We send them bright pink letters too. And it, it don't work. It's, it's a waste.
That's a better point.
And that's why I bring up that. So waste of postage and the, and the brightly colored, uh, papers is more expensive.
That's why I bring up the point. If they've done it elsewhere, if they're doing it here, they've done it elsewhere.
I mean, not only in, elsewhere in the arena of their life, they're not paying their medical bills. It's just a, it's just a hassle. And, and I understand people fall on hard times, but hard times don't last three generations.
The other thing is, you know, I think you mentioned something about discounts and, you know, I worked in a environment where we offered discounts. And it was interesting because the people wanted to take them, took them regularly, those that didn't want to, just didn't want to. It doesn't work.
Right. And again, we're, our utilities are suffering. We need to make money before we can do this kind of thing.
How are you, uh, working with the elderly and any, uh, is any, or? What I find is a lot of times, like, in the job, the work that I did before, the elderly was, were the more, most responsible. That's what I found was interesting.
I don't have trouble with the elderly. The only time is if maybe they're ill and they've been in the hospital for a while, we'll just let them know and we work with them.
That's, that's true. Point, point made for my. So I think that, bring it forward and let us take a look at it.
Okay, so I guess the next step is to rebound the ordinance, all put in these dates and these deposit amounts. We'll just go from that.
Thank you for the work on this. I know it's been a headache for you, like Anthony was saying, but you've done excellent job, I think.
One thing I'd like to say is, so we wanted to coincide this with the meter reading or the meter install. And we thought maybe it could go June, but Mike's driving his feet.
She's not only the teacher's pet, too, like she's.
So we would of course consider a, a special amount of time to implement this. And we're gonna be hit in the winter, so I'm thinking maybe nine months before we really fully enforce it, but we'll, that'll be up for discussion also.
Okay.
You didn't let it down in my mind. You're gonna make this work. Just listen to yourself talk.
Okay, are there any other thoughts on the matter? This conversation is adjourned.